Uh, Valerie, you wanna do the pleasure allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Present.
President.
Robert Eggers.
Present.
Present. Okay, planning commissioners, anybody have any announcements? None?
Nothing.
Department announcements?
I do not have a department announcement today.
Okay, then, next item is public comment. Anybody wish to speak on any item that's not in the agenda, has three minutes to speak. Do we have anybody? Okay, we close public comment. Consider agenda, any comments? No consent? Any changes? Okay. All right, so, acknowledging of public hearings.
Was there a motion to approve?
Oh, sorry, there a motion?
I move that the minutes be approved as read, as, yeah, read.
Read?
Second?
We moved that the agenda.
Oh, the agenda.
Consent agenda.
Okay.
I second that the consent agenda would be approved.
Which is the acknowledgement of public hearing in this case.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Announcement of public hearing?
Thank you, Chairman. This evening, Mr. Michael Kelly will be presenting a subdivision proposal.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. On the topic of, are we going to address item one, which is 240 Cole Road?
Yes, you've.
Okay, so we are on that one right now.
We are?
I thought item one was gonna be continuous.
Well, I wanted to ask about that.
We have publicly noticed item number one, and so there could be people that are in attendance today due to the applicant desiring to continue the matter when she can have better representation at the public meeting. She comes from, she's from Michigan, and her, and her local engineer is, is out of town right now, so she's requested that the planning commission consider her item at the next regular meeting. So, the applicant has requested a continuance, please, and that would be a motion on your part to, to grant that or to talk in her absence.
Yeah, I, I move that, that we continue the Dale Roth project.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you very much. Now, Mr. Kelly, you can really present the subdivision item.
Yes, I just wasn't sure if we were jumping to number two or not. But anyway, tentative subdivision map sixteen ninety-seven, I'll just open, get this, get this ready to go here. Okay, so I'm going to talk about tentative subdivision map sixteen ninety-seven, Bray color property of, near South Side Road. This is a proposal for this property, which is, what is this? Let's see. Okay. I hope this stops. All right. This is a proposal for this four-acre property to be divided into eleven parcels. This property that is, here is, of course, Hollister, and if you go out on Union Road, down South Side Road, past Enterprise, you arrive at Sunnyside Estates Development that's under construction right now, and you would go out Fulton Way or Mojave Way, and you'd reach this property here, which is proposed for this, which is ten lots of about six thousand to seventy-five hundred square feet each, which is, the minimum lot size around here in the, in the zone, well, I'll get to the question of zoning in a moment, but in the zone that's proposed to be used in this, it is five thousand square feet, that is the minimum. So here are the ten lots here, and also proposed are extensions of, of Mojave Way here, and Fulton Way over here, and Loop Street to connect the two. In addition, an eleventh lot specifically for utility purposes, Sunnyslope County Water District, it's an easement for a well site right now, and it would be a lot of its own for the same purpose, for a well. And also proposed, on the topic of zoning, is that the, the property right now is zoned AP, agricultural, productive. In order to allow this, the lot would need to be rezoned to single-family residential. If it were, it would be just like what's next door in Sunnyside Estates. And if you were to go to the property now, you would see, you'd see this, you'd see the residential development happening right now as part of Sunnyside Estates. These are along San Joa, uh, San Joaquin Court, and here is Sacramento Way and Fulton Way along the east edge of the subdivision site. And this is the end of Fulton Way, where it stubs into the subdivision site with the sidewalks and pavement and some utility piping physically available, you know, if, if this would start developing. And this is Mojave Way, if you're looking westward, you see the project site at the end and the existing newer residential development over here, and the open land over here, which right now is agriculture, but at, at the moment, in the general plan land use element, this whole area is mapped as residential mixed, down to Sunnyside Estates and eastward over to Ridge Mark and residential developments in between. And at the end of Mojave Way, this is where this is, there is the temporary cul-de-sac that serves Sunnyside Estates, but is actually on the Bray color property, and this would be replaced by home sites and an extension of Mojave Way. And I might mention that Mojave Way and Fulton Way would be maintained by the Community Facilities District, just as they are, the streets are, in Sunnyside Estates. So it's newer developments here and there in the county that would be paying into the funds that would maintain, there it is again, that would, decline, that would maintain the roads in all the developments that are part of the Community Facilities District. And then this is looking toward Mojave, from the project site, looking toward Mojave Way and the newer residences and beyond that South Side Road. And looking up close at the temporary cul-de-sac, you'll see there is a, a water line running there, just as evidence that the water line is physically available there. The utilities are right up to the property, and this is, well, the lots would be served by Sunnyslope County Water District Water, which has approved the use of the water by these residential lots. The sewer system is a different question right now. It's a condition of approval that you see in the resolution, that the applicant would need to seek approval from the city and from the local agency, Formation Commission, LAFCO, to use the city wastewater treatment system. That's a condition of approval that has to happen before the map can be recorded. And now, here we are back at Fulton Way, where it stubs into the project site. Now, staff reviewed this under California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA, found that there would not be significant environmental impacts to result, and there would not be impacts of such a degree that mitigation would be needed, and so the result is a negative declaration from this process. Although the initial study does point to the use of conditions of approval, that would be expected for this kind of a subdivision that would address environmental issues to result, but issues that are not considered significant. And those conditions are included in the resolution that you have. And also included in the resolution that you have in front of you is the draft ordinance that would be used by the board to rezone the property from agricultural, productive, as it's zoned now, to single-family residential. And the map would be conditional on this, so it wouldn't be effective unless the, or it couldn't be recorded if the rezoning were not to happen. But overall, if this were to be approved, it would essentially be an extension of Sunnyside Estates by ten lots in addition to the two hundred lots that are already approved and under construction right now. So, taking into consideration all of this, staff recommends that the planning commission review the information found in the staff report and found in the resolution and in the ordinance draft, and that the commission hold the public hearing, hear any proponents and opponents of the proposal, and then adopt the resolution to recommend the board enact the single-family residential zoning on this lot, and approve the tentative subdivision map subject to the findings and conditions in the resolution, one of which being the rezoning of the lot. And I can help answer any questions if you have any.
And if I could add, before we move on to the, to the board, just as an adjunct to staff's presentation, you can tell by the, the file number that some of the age and the history on this project came in in twenty sixteen, just as the county was finishing its general plan, but also contemporary with other subdivisions that made application that year, or the year previous in twenty fifteen, such as the Brigantino subdivision, the Bennett Ranch that's across the street, both of which are under construction. And while those projects moved forward, you know, this, this project was also in the hopper for staff to review and approve, and it was, it was, I guess there was agreements or understandings that pretty, pretty much following the Brigantino-Sunnyside approval, that the, the Bray application would be processed by county staff kind of forthright. Yeah, and it languished a little bit with the, with the change and the turnover and the staff changes, you know, at one point, Mr. Kelly was the only planner in the department before I came on in, in April twenty seventeen. So it got, it got that bad. And so, we got it back on track, and with good prodding from our local engineering, like, let's get this through. But just wanted to point out something, and it's in the staff report, you might be thinking about affordable housing. And it's of a day and of a rule set from twenty sixteen, when the county didn't have a requirement to build on-site, and it didn't have an LOFI. And so, you know, technically by the code, it was, you know, not required. And so even though you're seeing a ten-lot proposal right here, where we did not require something for affordable housing, because those are the rules of today, and this map had a, was a complete application several years ago. And not ironically, but I would say unfortunately, when the environmental review process went through for the large, would you go to the image that just shows this as a, kind of the last puzzle piece to Brigantino?
Yeah, this is the subdivision.
Even one back, yeah, or you had, where it's nice big black box, there you go. You know, so when the environmental document, the EIR, was prepared for the Sunnyside Estates, there were some elements of that study that said, that could be applied towards, you know, this ten-acre land piece. But there's also very specific statements that says, this EIR is analyzing Sunnyside Estates, it's not analyzing Bray. It's not analyzing Bray. And so what we needed on a staff level was an environmental document to support a recommendation for approval. And, boy, through different scenarios and trying to get that done through consultants and prices that were unacceptable, we, we took it in-house and tried to use existing documents as best we could, as well as finish and craft that document. So Mr. Kelly did craft in-house the initial study that's been on the street, was circulated for twenty days prior to your consideration this evening. So this one's kind of been a long time coming, and I'm sure the Bray's and Coles will be glad to be finished with it with a positive recommendation. I just wanted to give a little bit of, of that context before opening to commission questions of staff and the applicant. We're, we'll be glad to have it off our desk as well.
So my understanding, they have no, we can't charge them any fees for housing, low-income housing?
The, the rules.
Or can we still impose?
Subject to rules that are.
Subject to rules back in two sixteen?
Rules, when this application was considered complete, it was all voluntary. It was all, if you, if you choose voluntarily to include housing targeted to certain income, lower-income groups and moderate income, then you get a density bonus and other concessions defined by the state. But it wasn't, it wasn't a requirement that you must include.
Yeah, so in context, as we've heard through several divisions, people say, give me equal treatment to the four thousand, five hundred, that fee. That is actually voluntary, and it's just been incorporated as a condition of approval, reflecting that willingness on the property owner. And we didn't go there on this one, as, as staff members working with code and what's required on the books.
I have one question. The area that is for the water district, is that nearly two acres?
Approximately.
I'm hearing almost half the property?
Yeah, about half the property. A little under half, I think, because of the road that's, that's part of, you know, they're just slightly under half of the property.
So was that given to the water district by the property owner? Or purchased by the water district?
Exact arrangement, I'm not sure, but it's, it is for that specific purpose of utility.
Yeah, it would just, I'm just querying because it would indicate a lot of goodwill on the part of the property owner to.
Well, it isn't, yeah, I'm sorry to interrupt. It is an easement right now for the purpose of the utility, if I'm understanding right, if that's the right term, but an easement for that specific purpose.
Is that also where any kind of a rainwater accommodation is?
Not there. It would use the storm drainage system that is part of Sunnyside Estates, and it's in the design of the storm drainage system in Sunnyside Estates to allow the new drainage that comes from this development to use that.
And then this subdivision joins the same CFD, Community Finance District, that everybody's paying into to maintain such structures.
What I'm understanding is that a secondary unit on a property does not equal affordable housing?
For, for Rena purposes?
Yeah, for.
To ma, to meet our state mandate? Currently not, right? Tabin?
If, if someone wanted to encumber that property with rental restrictions that met our standards, I think we could probably put it in the yes-it-c counts column, but nothing is, we don't have the obligation here to require that.
Okay, so like a granny unit does not, is not the same thing?
Unless it's deed restricted.
Unless it's deed restricted to those income categories.
Okay, got it.
And so, you know, broadly, the, the new RMA director is trying to, and working with the ad hoc committee, they're exploring several avenues of how to meet affordable housing. One is, you know, finding ways to get housing for those income and those demographic groups, as well as just additional units in the community that are of a size where the, the rent and/or the mortgage would be, you know, a smaller package than a full market rate unit. So we're, we're, might be a great part of the, the next discussion we have here in a little bit, if you wish.
Yeah, excuse me, I haven't been asking permission.
No, no, no.
Through the chair, through the chair, through the chair.
Through the chair, right.
You'll be sure next year, so it's okay.
Yeah, right, yeah.
You'll be on it.
I don't have any questions.
Anybody have any questions?
I don't have any questions either at this time.
Okay, we open it to public.
My name is Ann Hall, I'm with San Bernardino Engineering, and I'm here on behalf of the applicant, and the applicant's also here if questions come up. First, I'd like to address, let's see, Commissioner Eglin, you asked about Sunnyslope. That is a, an easement that they had entered into an agreement with Sunnyslope previous to this subdivision. And in fact, as part of this, and first, I want to apologize, I was at the dentist this afternoon, I was at a root canal this afternoon, and I'm having some trouble talking. But as part of this subdivision, Sunnyslope's actually releasing about thirty-two feet of that easement, and then they're back to the property owner, so they've, they're on good terms with Sunnyslope, this is something Sunnyslope has, wants to use as a well site, and I think they will probably do some things once it's more accessible to them, once this road is built and completed. So that was one question. I know Michael addressed the fact that we are, as part of this, we're doing a zone change. I'd just like to add on to that, saying the general plan for the area has already been changed to residential mixed. So the zone change, although we're requesting it as part of this project, is really to bring the property in to compliance with the general plan designation for the area. And then, one, I had a question. We had received a copy of the draft conditions, but I noticed there were a couple added, and I didn't notice it till today from the one I had received, and so I haven't had a chance to talk with staff. But in particular, condition twenty speaks to additional invoices from county staff. And as Tabin mentioned, this project has been a long time in the pipeline. At the time, I believe, and since I haven't had time to check, I believe at the time this application was submitted, there was a set fee, it was not necessarily a recoverable fee. I don't, I don't know, given that the only real action has been going on here in the past few months, I don't know that this number's gonna come up to be a lot different than the fee they paid. But this condition as written is kind of a, we have no idea what that number is, and it's, I'm a little leery to agree to a condition that is completely open-ended, and I just didn't know if we had any more information available on that, or if we could set some kind of limit, or do you have an idea what we're talking about?
You know, you're correct. I, I've, I've forgot here with Michael that the, and ironic, it's not how it's done in other communities, but the zone change, actually, in the fee schedule, is a fixed fee, based on how many lots or units you have by the Health Department. In most communities, since it's a legislative action that could take long and deliberation, it's generally a deposit item.
And, and I know that's the way it is now, and I understand that.
Right, and here, we do have the map aspect, which is a, probably was a deposit item, but if these were fixed fees, you know, we're, we're not gonna ask for anymore. But Michael has been accounting for his time to, to finish the environmental review, and, you know, has been in for a while, there has been work done.
No, I know, I know Michael's been working on it here recently. I just, I, I, I just don't know how much money that, in agreeing to that condition, I don't know what to advise my client he's agreeing to do.
Okay, we might not know the dollar amount, but it's an agreement that's already been made with even the earlier, so maybe it's even redundant just to have here, that we would be recovering staff time and cost, that was part of the application agreement going forward. So maybe the language here is a little disconcerting, but it's, it's not new news?
Except for I think the collection of staff time is a change that's been made on current projects, but I'm not sure that was in place when they paid their application fee. I'm not sure that that was how things were structured when they.
What would be, what would be your understanding of when the bill should be reconciled?
And again, in the past, the fee was set, and the initial study was done for that fee, and there was no follow-up invoicing for staff time. I understand now that fees are so much plus a deposit, and, and, and that is how things are handled now, but I'm not sure that that was at the time. And again, we could be talking about five hundred dollars, and it's no big deal, but I don't know what we're talking about, and I didn't, I apologize, I didn't get an opportunity to call you and ask you if you had an idea of what we're talking about. And I didn't, I apologize, I didn't get an opportunity to call you and ask you if you had an idea of what we're talking about. So-
Yeah, I could have, I could have been armored with some math. You're, you're not wanting to continue the matter for us to figure something out?
I don't want to continue it, and I don't, you know, I don't want to continue it. Hopefully, we can all come to an agreement and we can resolve it tonight. But I don't, I guess maybe can we just make it of record that we are, you know, we have a question about this and we'd like an opportunity to get an idea of the scope of it? Or can we reserve the right to discuss it further if? I just don't know what we're talking about, whether we're talking about five hundred dollars or we're talking about five thousand dollars or we're talking about thirty thousand dollars. I don't know. And, you know, for thirty thousand dollars, we might want to continue it, but I don't know where we're at.
Don't recommend continuance. Maybe we could, I just kind of want to give you an avenue for appeal of a staff. I mean, so if we, any staff decision that we make administratively or a determination or a letter that says, you know, here's, here's, here's a call staff is making, every one of those is appealable, all right? It's called a, you know, determination of the director. So if we sent you a recommendation for here's your outstanding invoice, the Planning Commission is already set up as the natural appeal body for staff-level reviews. So we have, we have that avenue and it, and it would be scheduled to come back. I guess you'd have to pay the appeal fee to do that, but it would be coming back before the Planning Commission to deliberate.
Okay, and, and that's all, I think that answers my question. If it comes back and we really feel strongly about it, as long as we have an avenue, as long as we're not-
You, you do have administrative recourse if it's too big to swallow.
And it's probably not going to be. I just want to be sure what I'm telling my client to agree to.
If I could, I'm going to just segue for a moment into a broader practice that we're going to be implementing with the planning reviews in that the, the Planning Department fee structure, we're going to recommend that the board approve and we'll vet it past the Planning Commission, but that we have a fee structure that starts over the counter with our review and accounts for the SEQA analysis, whether it's consultants, the staff review, staff preparation, and then public hearing with a determination, whether it's approved or denied. But we want a fee structure to take us that far. If a project's denied, everything's done and there's no more things. But if it's approved, we're going to have conditions here where we require and ask that the applicants enter into a condition compliance mitigation monitoring reporting program. Okay, it's a big mouthful, but right, when you give your approvals and there's forty-six things to do for the applicant, you know, it goes out in their court for a while as they're assembling the information or actually building things on the property. We're reviewing biology reports, we're making site visits. We're still spending time and effort to help them implement their, or record that they're implementing their mitigation monitoring program. So it's a standard practice in many communities. And right now, what we have is kind of a fuzzy line, is when does it, when does it stop? Once, you know, the last home is moved into and we have no longer review? So maybe this is some of the lead-up language that we could, but we're, you know, we're going to vet such changes in fee structure or at least modernization, bringing things current. We'll vet that past the development community as well as the Planning Commission before it just, before they are the rules. But it's, it's a general practice and I think it's clean, clean that way. Because often, think of a large subdivision, as you go through all this review and entitlement process to a Planning Commission, approval of a tentative map. Well, right then, you know, that, that landowner could sell the property to a builder, you know, such as what happened in Sunnyside. And that person's going to be entering and doing all the condition compliance. So it's a real natural break where, you know, you have the fee structure up to entitlement, which is the on-paper approvals, and then following through with the conditions and mitigation measures and what are the staff costs to see that through. So that's just, that's just a broad program that we're going to engage in. It's, I think it'll be understandable and, and transparent.
And certainly, that, I understand what you're saying and I understand why you would want that. And once that is passed and established ordinance, we have to comply with it. I guess the only thing I'm looking at here, again, is that we, we had, we had ordinances in place at the time of the application, which I believe the applicant has made their best effort to comply with. And we just want to be, we're just looking to be judged under those rules, so.
Would the previous fee schedule help you?
Do you have the previous one?
I'm pretty sure this is it. I looked it up on my phone because it's still on the website.
If you can find that the zone change and the tentative subdivision map were both fixed fee prices, there's, there's nothing more to ask of the applicant and the condition will be moot.
Okay, so-
Was it the twenty thirteen prior, right?
Yeah. So, okay, and see there, that's helpful because the zone change does have a per hour, so it does. And that's what I said I hadn't had a chance to look at. The zone change does have a per hour fee.
And it's back at the old hundred-dollar rate versus the-
Yeah, it is at the hundred-dollar rate.
Thirty-three?
Hundred-dollar rate.
Hundred vers-
One thirty, one thirty-six or so, one seventy-two or something.
And-
Hundred and thirty-four dollars now.
And the major subdivision does not. So the, but the zoning does at the hundred, so there was, and that, I did not know, like I said, when I asked the question. But, okay, I think you've answered it. And I think I've, basically, you know, we just have the question on record and that way, if it comes back, we, we know what to do. Okay. Those, that was the only question I had. Does staff have any, I mean, does the Planning Commission have any questions of myself or the applicant?
No.
I don't.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So- So before you, there's two, there's two actions. There's a recommendation to the board on action on the zone change. To take it from agricultural, productive to the same zoning designation as the neighboring subdivision, R1. And then, should that be approved by the board, there's a resolution of approval for the subdivision and its many conditions of approval.
So I'll close with public comment. No more public. Bring back staff.
Oh, I'm sorry, I spoke too early.
Yeah.
That was my staff spiel.
There you go.
Okay, I, I make a motion that we adopt Resolution twenty nineteen dash X, recommending the Board of Supervisors rezone the property as single-family residential and approve tentative subdivision map sixteen dash ninety-seven with findings per staff recommendation.
I second that motion.
And subject to the conditions of approval.
And subject to the conditions of the approval, yes.
I second that as well.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Congratulations. Now we're going on to-
What's left?
I have an unprofessional slide presentation.
Discussion.
Approved. I vote to approve it. Where's page width? How do you get page width?
And that was the same property?
All right. Go ahead. So, I would like to take a moment before we do this item to introduce our newest staff planner, Ariel Goodspeed. She was very successful in our recruitment for assistant planner. And this is the beginning of your third, this is the midpoint on your third week? Fourth week? She's already got one paycheck so far. Very promising, we're very hap- very happy to have her on board. And what was your degree from? Humboldt State with-
So my undergrad was in environmental policy from Humboldt State University. And then my master's was in urban and regional planning from San Jose State University with a focus on environmental planning.
Also at San Jose State?
At San Jose State.
Yeah, well, that, that makes it approved.
So we're very proud and welcoming for Ariel Goodspeed to be here. We also had another hire, which was Megan Stevens as a staff services specialist. She had been working with us as an office assistant, but it was a new position that was described and that she competed for with an internal recruitment. I'm not quite sure how many applicants there were, but she was successful in that. And Megan Stevens is, it's a staff service, so she's helping work with the, the systems and the operations of things. She's not a planner, but computer systems, the integration of documents, learning, it's, uh, but what I wanted to do with that is saying thank you with your recommendation to the Board of Supervisors on the budget and thank you to the supervisors for authorizing the additional positions at the RMA, of which Megan is one of those positions, as well as code enforcement officer, and I think there's a couple others. And that's a segue into this. I know it was a commissioner wanted discussion item, so can we task staff with things to do and to bring back information? But now with, you know, the skill set that Ariel brings to the, to the table, as well as the skill set and the functions in the new position that Megan Stevens has, is I slash we in the, in the department are in a position to really start taking on some of these components that have, we haven't been able to engage because we've had paying customers that need review and we've been in the trenches just fighting. And now we can start thinking about systems and improvements and what are those zone, zoning codes and general plan changes that we need to amend and get to. So thank you for that. So just briefly, not much different, I don't want to present much different from what I put in the little staff memo, but I had a, do you mind receiving this brief introduction before you engage in a discussion? Okay, I'm hearing none, I'll go forward. So I was just a little concerned maybe that, you know, if, if most of your lens as planning commissioners is with the one, two, or four projects that we bring in any one meeting, you know, what, what are we doing during, during the daytime? What are we doing with the other jobs? What are, what, what's on our plate? And so I thought it would be important to share with you major projects presently under review, as well as the administrative, programmatic, and functional improvements we're trying to make in the department as we rebuild ourselves back from a staff of one and, and getting through the, this backlog. And then also share here the context of direction that the general plan gives explicitly that the county is supposed to implement and observe and, and implement with, you know, kind of with or without resources. So just briefly, major projects under review in your staff report and on the screen, if you want. We've, in no particular order here, there's presently working on the US Highway 101 commercial nodes, of which you've had a public hearing already. I want to thank each and every one of you for being available for the special meeting that we need to have happen on September fourth. I'm, I'm sorry, Commissioner Navarro, you, you weighed in this evening that you-
Yes.
That's right, so we'll, we'll have five commissioners, we'll have a quorum. There's the Riverside Two, an affordable housing proposal that staff is working on. Hundred ninety home and commercial proposal in Ridge Mark that takes meetings and daily activities and coordination with EIR and environmental consultants.
Oh, thank you, dear.
Okay. There's a specific plan proposal you all might have heard about, south of Ridge Mark, which is a proposal as large as thirteen hundred homes, commercial center, school sites. And we've got issues of connectivity and water and well uses and things. And it's, you know, it's, it's in the trenches right now as we're reviewing that with, and it takes internal meetings with other departments and, you know, telephone calls and things. Got a use permit for an RV camping facility. There's a proposal for a daycare center in a residential neighborhood that's taking a lot of our attention here, that hasn't come quite to fruition to be at the Planning Commission yet. Assisted care facilities, there's a, a large church that's proposing an expansion adjacent to the city. We would have had Roth subdivision on the table tonight, except for the request for the continuance. You, you handled the Bray Coler ten-lot subdivision today. And there, you know, there's even a proposal out there that once used to be called the New Town. It was going to be, you know, many residences out there on the Floriani Ranch. And, you know, that investment scenario has morphed into another proposal that we're still taking meetings and talking about and working through environmental issues or code compliance. And it's still gelling and taking, taking shape, as well as the Giacalone Christopher proposal.
And where is that?
That's above the airport at the one fifty, it's proposed at the one fifty-six and San Felipe Road Exchange on the northeast corner. And it would, the, the sketched plans we've seen at this point for discussion have been like a two-and-a-half-mile race course. It looks like a race course, but not a race course. It would be used for testing and vetting autonomous vehicles, almost like we've heard for the Floriani project. But yet, also, I believe the investment interests are trying to cull some of the Bay Area, you know, computer, electronic car, electric car, all those test facilities and, and bring, you know, the, their technical teams down to not only test vehicles, but to do work. And that applicant also has an eye on, on the community as well. They're hoping to maybe incorporate some trade and tech schools so that some of the local residents can, you know, brush up and get some high-tech skills, skills offered in a local venue. And but of course, under each one of these, you know, you've got, you know, what's on the land, environmental review, what are the opportunities, what are the constraints? Do they have water sewer access? What about Highway twenty-five, you know, so all these discussions. And then internally, just day in and day out at the, at the, at the Planning Department, we've got planning counter and phone calls. We've got projects under construction that we go and inspect and, and visit and hash through building permits and sometimes reject building permits and have people correct plans. And we've got to engage in that. And a lot of the little stuff you don't see, lot line adjustments, barns, garages. And Anita can tell you about Public Records Act requests. They come in kind of, kind of like thunder. And then here it is, and boy, we've got to turn that around in a given period of time. And it basically, they often say, give us every record you have. So we've got to cull email records, paper files, our dungeon, who's email who's no longer here that we need to have IT break into and, and get those records. We participate in local and regional meetings regarding a handful of matters. Road realignments or airport land use consistency reviews where we're the, speaking with these COGS and talking about these growth management projections and plans taking shape, as well as the assistance to the other departments under the RMA. Building, public works, code enforcement, waste management, LAFCO. And we rent the park facilities as well. And we're trying to get that done. And right down to what other stuff we do is permits for pumpkin patches, Christmas tree lots, and truck pulls. And different things like that. So, uh-oh. I just wanted to share that. And also, on the heels here, that wasn't there, but we've got about ten cannabis applications under review at the, at the agricultural commissioner's office while they're vetting the qualifications of the individuals who would do the business. And once those individuals pass that test on being qualified to operate a cannabis business- And once those individuals pass that test on being qualified to operate a cannabis business in the community, well, it's going to come right to the RMA department as use permits for cannabis greenhouse and and grow facilities or the testing facility at a existing building or a manufacturing proposal similar to what you had in front of you for the the hemp campus. And so at one, I mean, we even met just today. We were great. We were gracious. We were fortunate enough to have an hour with agricultural commissioner, just kind of talking in sync about how our departments need to talk to each other and what's coming down the line. So we're working on those systems. We're trying to automate our permits. We've got a zoning code to update, procedures manuals. And so I think you've read it, and and so I don't need to go ad nauseam into all this. But we we're we're busy folks. And boy, the last one kind of saddened me a little bit, new literature and improvements to the practice. You know, as we can, we try to learn from the trade journals, you know, who's doing what, where's where's the good ordinance? What can we learn from others? And do we get to go to a conference right, you know, every so often? And so we will be going to a conference here next month. And I'll 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 be joining Commissioner Gibson and I'll be your chaperone.
I was going to say.
Yeah, right. Yeah. But, you know, lights out at ten. But we'll be going to-
And O'Conne credit card, right? No County Credit Card.
See, that's the check the county does, is they make you use your own credit card first and then ask for reimbursement. So that's that's actually a real practice that's happening here. But we will do that. And I like to kind of say when you come back from a conference, you know, bring fire back from the mountain to the village, right? If we've learned something, we had eye-opening things, what other commissions are doing or how their how their staff mistreats the planning commission. It's good to hear those those war stories and also those good models. So that'll be great. Well, the next section here, before I turn over the discussion, is that, you know, the general plan also, well, just frankly, it has things for us to do. Today, the Board of Supervisors has not assigned additional monies to the RMA budget to supplement either through consultant staff or additional on on on-premise staff to take on this additional workload of implementing the general plan policies. But there's hundreds of them, and many of them need action. And so what I was hoping today is with, I've kind of synthesized what what I thought were the top three that kind of ran similar to some of your individual requests or need for information. If you were going to have staff bring something back, it was like, was it something to do with economic development? Oh, but we also want to move forward on housing and ADUs and the and those fees. And also like, well, staff, you've been telling me the zoning code is inconsistent with state law. How come that's not done yet? And 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 so what I think I could do, now that we've got additional bandwidth, we don't have as much bandwidth as I need to get all this done. Some of this might need additional funding. But we do want to address these things. And I think I could, we could have not just a discussion item, but almost a report back on a quarterly basis. Some progress if we choose one or two of these things that you would have staff work on. So I'm trying to say as much as we can do under the current budget scenario and staffing scenario, which just happens to be a little bit more than we had two months ago because we've got some new staff. So, um... Yeah, this is, I guess Dulce Alonso spoke with each of you or several of you to just kind of hear what you're-
Yeah, there's quite some-
As you look on the screen right now and you see these bullets right here, do those... Is there something that was really big that you you thought about staff or the county engaging that's kind of not on this list? I want to make make sure I haven't missed something. Is there... Can you find your concern in one of these bullets? On what you wanted us to do, you know, housing, commercial business permit-
Yeah, the commercial-
Processing of commercial applications.
I think the the commercial was a little more detailed than just permits. It was getting properties zoned and get the EIRs started so that if a tech company comes, we're not doing a six-year dance, trying to get it going.
Great.
So it was part of pre, I don't know, pre-zoning or whatever you would call it.
So we did have a lost in filter, right? It was Dulce speaking with you, she writing a note down, me deciphering a note. But even just right there, I can make a tie right back to here, zoning code consistency. Our our code wants us to, it says, the general plan has a a land use allowance up to twenty units per acre. My my most dense zoning implementation right now is eight units per acre. What's the most, fifteen? RM? We have an RM zone that can go to twenty? Well, I know there's a general plan policy in there. It's supposed to, we're supposed to designate one that goes up to thirty, thirty units per acre. But also, like, we don't, one of the recommendations, we have public and quasi-public on the general plan map, but I don't have a zoning code for that or what the allowed uses are or what the development standards are. And if we do find Commissioner Gibson that we have, you know, paint on the zoning map that's not consistent yet with the vision of the general plan, that's a zoning code, that's a zoning map amendment, and it might take us writing the ordinance for those. So it's, yeah. And and when the when the governmental rule set is clear in procedures, business can swim in that environment. When we, when when they come to us and we say, I don't know what to do. We don't have direction. Or this is inconsistent with that, and you're going to have to pay the, you're going to have to pay the cost right now because you're you're here for us to straighten this out for your property. So zoning code consistency is important. Housing is important. And I just wanted to couch that, that I think there's a way that we can bring back fire to the planning commission that meets your needs for leadership and information while also moving the ball forward on some of these macro programs and and getting our house in order. And right now, just even if I could, just go back up to this thing, this little thing, you know, it's just one line here, procedures manual. It's just a little line right here, but we are really making a conscious effort right now to record what a good practice is. And so that, you know, one planner doesn't process something a little differently or out of sync than what another planner would do. We're we're writing it down. We're taking it to the table and discussing it as a group and say, this is what we're going to go forward with as of August twenty nineteen, and let's do it this way. And at one point, what I think I could also do is as we get a good handful of these, is bring them to the planning commission. Let you know what we're doing, and you can ask questions about that. But also kind of give a blessing, if you would, where you're familiar with the practice and the way that a process or, you know, the applicant will be treated in such a matter. Well, I saw, Tavon, that you had a procedure for that. Did you deviate from that, or did you stick to that? All right, so it's a little body check between, you know, your leadership and what we do with the department. So with that, I'm feeling like I've been over-caffeinated and talked too much for your discussion item. I kind of wanted to lay that out there. And Commissioner Gibson, you kind of let me know, like, oh, maybe I just did too much for what your simple request was.
But I like it.
Do you? Okay. So with that, I can either, I can I can stand down or I can sit over there. Actually, I'd like to stand. Oh, I got Ray Pierce card. What is that, sir?
Red.
Oh.
Oh, you got the Ray Pierce card.
I was more than three minutes. Okay. All right, so I just, so it was my suggestion that you, you know, consider these things. Help us prioritize one or or two bodies of work that you'd like to see moved along and improved on. I even came across a a paper that followed the general plan adoption by the Board of Supervisor for, what's her name? Barrios? Margie Barrios, where she asked EMC, who had who had finished the general plan for the county, what are the things we should implement? What are the next steps for implementing the general plan? And so from the EMC office, there was a letter prepared for Margie that actually, about four pages. And it's a different, it's a little different order, but it was like, we suggest you do these first things first and some other things second. And one of those major ones was, you know, zoning code consistency. I don't want to derail your conversation, but I did bring copies for the public and yourself if you wanted to look at that letter. Yes, I'm I'm speaking too much for your discussion. I'm going to be quiet now. Thank you for your time.
Through the chair. I'll interrupt Tavon. The commercial business permit processing. If we are looking to get more business moving into the county, when, what's her name, asked us for these questions?
Dulce.
Dulce, yeah. It was, I called Willis Construction. I called American Casting and several others that I was familiar with, that I knew would would talk to me a little bit. And when American Casting said that it costs them a million dollars to let go of a plan to build another office on their property because the county did not want a portable building there to add, to work as their office. And so they just moved out of the whole area or that area and went to another building that they're going to put another million dollars into making it work for them as far as casting industry. And so it seems to me that that issues like that need to be worked out. If if you see like bang, 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 this is this is a hang-up for other businesses coming into that industrial park. We need, we need to think about how we're going to get faster service for businesses that that they're going to be encouraged, that they're going to hear us wanting to work with them. And and I'm not saying that, you know, it's you, but I think that codification-
You said it was the location they wanted was in an existing business park?
Yes. American Casting is right there at the-
One twenty, is that the one that makes all the the... You can assemble, you can assemble a building elsewhere from their pieces. It's like they make the Lego pieces, and then you put them elsewhere and you build a building with those pieces?
Right.
I'm sorry, that's oversimplification, but I think we get it. I mean, you've you-
There are parts, a parts manufacturer.
And that's right up there off just east of the one oh one, right?
American Casting is right where you turn into where you work.
Oh, that's here, the casting.
What's what's the one I'm thinking?
The other one is Willis. Willis is pre-cast.
Yeah, Willis pre-cast, that's cement. That one is high-dense, high-temperature casting for special parts.
So the business park is actually city property.
Oh.
Yeah, the county offices are on city, are in city jurisdictions.
Ah.
And it's all in the building.
Yeah, so I'm not aware of that conversation nor what the particulars are. But actually, yeah, we're, I think we own the building, but we're on city, city- Yeah, but but the the city limit line goes around the airport, and it goes up the office park and there, and then it-
Yeah, I was looking at where the city line was, and I thought I thought it was just on the airport side. Yeah.
I'm in the county.
Okay.
I got that little pocket there.
So I I'm I'm not for for certain, but I know that Office Park is is in county. But say it was in 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 county. You know, it probably, you know, if there was an existing industrial, if there was an Office Park approved, there should be development standards that would let the community know what they can build, how high and what intensity and what architecture it needed to look like, and how much landscape to put in and where their employees, how many parking spaces they need.
So all that stuff is codified with the city.
Industrial park plan, yeah.
So it's the city's fault.
I want to comment to that. I wanted to get a permit to extend my building fifty feet by seventy-five, building permit. Took me almost a year to get it.
A year?
Yes. I was going crazy.
And that's with the city?
In county.
County.
He's looking at me.
You know, the county, I hate to say this, consultants just kept going back and forth, back and forth. And then they wanted footings, and that was my argument. They wanted footings where there's no building. I go, what's the purpose of putting? Well, that's what the engineer wants. I go, no.
Well, there's there's several several things at play right there. There's one, is in the RMA, we we screen, sounds like I'm trying to be restrictive, but we review physical plans to see if those uses and those activities are consistent with land use in general plan. There's that review. And then there's, you know, the sixty pages of construction that show how strong it is, that it's going to meet earthquake standards, and it's going to stand up in a wind load, and and those kind of construction details. And so presently, right now, the building department, we do not have the capacity at home in staff for one of our own to turn all the plans and to do that kind of review. We have to put it in the mail for a consultant agency that has the qualified people to turn the pages and do those reviews.
They don't have the qualified people, in my opinion. Because they, I had to resimmate the plans three or four times. Well, they, well, we didn't catch this last time. Oh, we didn't catch this last time. It just consisted, and in my opinion, those consultants are just, every time we go back, they're building the county. And it's costing the county a lot of money.
I'm sorry about the year time, but there's a certain part of that, that's just the nature of the beast. Because you might have a really great architectural firm, but they're using an older code.
What I'm what I'm getting here is the planning, we can say, okay, they can do it, but the other department, which is the building department, has to be in with the planning so they can get commercial business more-
Correct.
Faster erected.
Well, right now, we're at a very structural thing where we ship a plan, a a set of building plans out for two weeks.
Ten working days.
For ten working days. And generally, they don't come in earlier. Oh, let's just get it done. We'll send it back in three. I mean, it kind of takes the full breadth, and we've got the courier, and then we've got to tell the applicant that the-
Is that for commercial or residential?
For commercial. Then we have to tell the applicant that their plans are ready, and then you've got to make all those arrangements. I guess where I'm getting at is not trying to make excuses, but yet if we had funded, funding in such a way that we have those staff qualifications here, we could cut down a lot of the logistics. We could also have a person that's much more familiar with this exact community versus a third party that's doing plans for different places. Not that we're going to get away from being compliant with building code, but a person in-house could learn the 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 tenor and the candor. They could learn San Benito County and how we-
Yeah, because some of the ordinance in other counties are different than this one. They could be stricter. They could be less lenient. So if you get a planner that's or a building inspector that's from another county, he is applying for he's learned from other areas, not what's here. And that's what causes delays.
And 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 so it's for that kind of scenario that we're so engaged right now with writing reproducible procedures. And so that we're regular and methodical. And, you know, one person looks at it and gives you a hundred conditions. The other person says, oh, that's fine. Just do these two things. You know, like, I remember one time, one of my building inspectors was on vacation at a city I worked for. We had universities and different college campuses, and we had an inspector that did that. And we had an inspector that did the rest of the town. And one of the universities came in and says, oh, we need an inspection. And they said, okay, well, so-and-so's here. Well, so-and-so's, oh, no, no, we want the easy guy. Ooh, wait a minute, you know, because code could, should be code, right? Compliance should be compliance. And so I'm sorry for your experience, but we can, you know, one of the things here is, you know, how do you, especially in housing, we're supposed to find ways to streamline governmental processes and procedures. And how do we do that? And how do we engage that?
So how do how do we get another, a little more expertise funded? How do we get another person into RMA? So how, how do we get another, a little more expertise funded? How do we get another person into RMA? Do we have to wait till next year?
The board could do a supplemental, but wouldn't that direction have to come from the RMA director to add staff?
Well, I think what you're gonna find today is as you, we write this down right now, that this is maybe something you find important. And doggone it, if we're not gonna find another fifteen important things as well. And which one do we wanna fund as the, having the most effect for whatever your particular goal is? Is it for, to nurture existing businesses? Or is it the, do we wanna put the money on affordable housing regulation? You know, so there's gonna be several. And so that's part of this discussion, is that we, we capture these things and sift them through. Cause if you, if you had a million dollars worth of stuff and you're only gonna get two hundred thousand, what are you gonna get done? Which one? So that is involving yourself in the budgetary process or recommending that, that each one of you is appointed by one of the, recommended by one of the supervisors, correct? That you share with them that it's important to you, and you think it's important with the community, and that more attention is given to X, Y, Z?
Now, we, we do not hear cases that, that come to you for business. Is that the case? I mean, like, if, if there's gonna be a building that will house monkey cages. And they're, they need welders, and they've got this kind of atmosphere, does that kind of a business property? If it's with, going to be done on, in business zoning, commercial zoning? How much oversight do we have on that? Or does that go through straight codes on your side?
Kinda like the office park example we gave before, with, with each of the zones, there are a range of uses that you can do. Just move in, or, you know, get your electrical permits for the wall you're adding, or the wall you're taking out, or your new sign. Well, there's a certain amount of things that you can do in an M-two-heavy industrial district. And there are things that you say, well, planning commission says it depends. We need to ask for a conditional use permit, cause we wanna look at it. And so that's the same for many of our commercial districts, as, as well as house, like residential district. You know, it, we expect single-family homes to go in a residential district. You don't see every one of those houses, cause it's already, it's already verdiad.
Yeah.
Being that.
But, but you're, with the commercial nodes applications that's going forward is, right now, is that's a policy formation, part of the discussion between you and the. That's fine. The board is, how much discretion does the planning commission wish to have? Thank you, Commissioner Gibson. I will, it's your discussion.
Would you pass that card down? Where are you getting these cards?
Everybody has a card. Being that, being that I was tagged in this discussion by the planner, I will make my comments last, so.
Okay. Actually, I was gonna propose that you make your comments first, just as.
Okay, well, there we go.
You made the request. I just wanna make sure that we, we capture through the chair what, what you wanted, the intent you wanted to have as part of this discussion.
Through the chair, this entire, entire project wasn't what I suggested, but it's a great idea. Thank you, Tavon. And now that we're doing it, my suggestion would be for the commercial, that my, my intention was never just simply the application. It was designating land in the general plan for commercial, getting the EIRs done to get this thing to where it's almost shovel-ready. So if we do have a large employer coming in, we can meet their need quickly instead of having them go elsewhere. That was my original intent, and streamlining the application process. It was a lot larger concept. So that, because the, the county gave the EDC a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, the city did the same. They're gonna go out and try to find employers to come here, but if we don't have anything ready, we're kinda spinning our wheels. And then we're gonna just harm ourselves more in the long run if they're gonna say, well, we don't go there because they're not ready. So I'd like to get that ball rolling. I think employment here in the county is the biggest issue we're suffering from. If we had more employers, the traffic on twenty-five wouldn't be an issue to anybody. So the employment here, the, the lack of decent employment is the issue. And I would like to tackle that, and I think as the planning commission. If we can do anything for the benefit of the community, it would be jobs. And we have a, a long way, in my estimation, to go to, to get that done in a timely manner.
So my understanding is, we zone some industrial parks, cause we have no industrial parks in the county.
Ah.
Just nothing.
Everything that's, everything that's industrial right now is within the city, isn't it?
The city?
Not, not.
Not all of it, but there's very small portions.
Out around one oh one and one twenty-nine.
I don't think this is industrial over there.
You get ag industrial.
That's a whole different.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, classically, such uses are pretty dependent on really solid infrastructure. Do you have abundance of electrical power? Do you have water systems? Do you have sewage systems? Do you have access to highways and roads? And more than not, those fall to your city municipalities and areas around those types of providers. So for us to have a, I'm gonna be facetious here, but not really, if we had a new island of industrial activity. That would need to be supported by those physical plants in such a way that it's viable for those things, viable for those, right? We might say, let's put it on one oh one, right where the twenty-five is. Oh, not twenty-five and one oh one, because that's the other county. We wanna pull it in, you know? It's like, what are the physical systems? So it would probably be, we'd, to do, to make the paint changes on the map. You'd probably be looking at areas like one fifty-six or somewhere that already has some industrial zoning and things. But you're, you know, right there next to the sewer plant and the water, we call it a wastewater treatment plant, not a sewer plant. Right where you've got that, where the new pipe you need to lay back to the treatment plant isn't twelve miles long. Where it's a natural, where it's right there, and where that service district would be willing to draw a line around. So it can be done, but it's, you know, we're not gonna, those things are classically, that's a. It's a, I don't wanna say urban, but it's a, you know, it's a city kinda thing to have the, the factory, right? It's only, what we're used to though is the agricultural factory, right? You box the lettuce, put it on the truck, package it, and ship it out.
But at the same time, we have to come to grips with the fact that we're bedroom community, community for Silicon Valley. So we have to start, stop, stop thinking that we're an ag community. We just can't bury our heads in the sand. We have to think forty or fifty years into the future and plan that something has to change. Or we'll be houses from one side of the valley to the other. And that's not acceptable either, cause you can't grow much food and, and housing tracks. So we have to, we have to plan long range.
Yeah. It's kind of exciting when I get a cold call from a realtor, says, I, I'm, I've got an investment firm that wants to buy ten thousand acres, and they wanna start a brand-new university. I, we entertain these kinda calls. And not just the university, but we want the supporting restaurants, and kinkos, and shopping centers, and the housing to go with it. Can you help me find some real estate? So that, yeah, it was just a simple thing we put on the list, phone calls from the public, but it's with an eye on that economic development. And, you know, continued conversations, and we find out, oh, you didn't really need ten thousand. You were looking at a ten thousand acre property. But you only wanted a thousand. Well, I can move, I can find, it's easier for me to fit a thousand acres somewhere next to those utilities. And later conversation, found they were interested in even a smaller amount of acreage to get done what they want. But that's a economic generator, right? A university or a campus with the jobs and the construction and local opportunity.
Part of the, part of the general plan is not only gaveling, but CSUMB. So at some point in the future, we have to look at that as well.
Mm-hmm. No, Tavon, I got a question. What keeps county, someone wants to develop some land, what keeps them from sending their own treatment plant? Is there state regulations, you know, that they could allow a treatment plant somewhere else than what we have here?
Yeah, there's quite, quite the layer of many, many authorities that have a say in the quality of groundwater. The primary document of which is the Hollister Urban Area Wastewater Management Plan, which was a memorandum of understanding between San Benito County Water District. Countywide Water District, the county of San Benito is the RMA and you and me, and then the city of Hollister. And then I think later the Sunnyside Water District became adjunct to that. But that is an agreement for how to use and, and get groundwater treated, sewer connections at the existing facility that's out here right now. The one that the city of Hollister operates. And it's presently sized about two and a half to three times even the expected growth of the city of Hollister. And so there's this line that's been drawn much farther than the city limits, where there's kinda a promise to serve sewer. To properties on county land, but in those areas. The treatment plant is also inseparable from Central Valley water that's coming over. It's called Blue Valve Water. It's also central to the, the quality of water that comes out of the ground for agricultural purposes and goes, and so there's, for lack of a better word. There's a, a practice to blend these waters in such a way that it's drinkable, and it's arable for crops. And then the, what goes into the ground, either refuse or just runoff, is of a quality that's not gonna be a detriment to our existing aquifer. What can we treat? In fact, some of these proposals we're, we're working with is even wastewater treated once or two levels might still be too dirty for us to allow to go back into the ground. And we've got Central Coast Regional Water Quality Control Board, as well as some state agencies. So there's a lot of oversight and a lot of, you wouldn't believe the alphabet soup on some of this stuff. But yeah, it's, protecting the groundwater is the livelihood of the crops and the food we grow, as well as the jobs. And it's, you know, it used to say, if you wanted to know the history of California, you follow the history of the railroad and also the development of water, right? The Central Canal, you know, the Central Valley Canal, which also built the freeways to build the canal. You know, there's this history, is we can't really separate ourselves from how important water is in the community, and it's just, there's a lot of hands in it.
Well, the sewer system's already got the Purple Valve going out for raw crops. Yeah, down right road.
Right, yeah, it's, cause it's treated in tertiary, it's like three levels.
Supposed to be safe. I don't know about that, but they can use it for raw crops.
Yeah, yeah.
Through the chair. So, you know, when I saw this topic, and, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, Commissioner Gibson, but, you know, the discussion was, that, that happened today is, I thought it was around. How do we bring up topics that of, that are interest, that we have interest as, as a planning commission to this meeting? So procedurally, you know, what is, what is the process to, to do that? And secondary is, you know, what, what maybe are those topics that we wanna see on a recurring basis? So, so first I wanted to, to thank you for, for, for this, for this list of everything that you're doing. I think this was commendable in terms of, you know, putting together this list, cause there was many things on this list that I was not aware of. So, so very, very helpful, and I appreciate you putting together the list. And I think in terms of the, the issues and the concerns that the planning commission has, has already brought up to Dulce, I, I think is captured for the most part. You know, we, we can, we can fine tune that list, but I think that's, 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 that's an accurate list in terms of topics that, that we have today. Now, those could change, you know, in three months, or six months, or twelve months. So, so I guess in terms of the discussion with, with, with the planning commissioners and with, with the planning department would be. What is, what is, was a procedure in terms of identifying, hey, here's the one topic, or the two topics, or whatever the, the topics are that we think. Require or necessitate additional focus by the planning commission to, to either review, understand. Or, or potentially drive, you know, the right policies or, or changes in, in ordinances at the county level. You know, I, I think the list is, is helpful in terms of what we've come up with, but we haven't had a collective discussion in terms of the planning commission say. Yeah, we all have these, these thoughts in terms of what's important, but what's, what's the one topic that we think warrants our, our collective review? And involvement as a planning commission on a regular basis, maybe monthly, it may be quarterly, to, to your, to your suggestion. But, you know, I, I thought that was the, the, the crux of what Commissioner Gibson was, was, was trying to get to. It's like, you know, how do we, how do we work together as, as commissioners? Cause we can't meet outside of this meeting. So, you know, what's, what's the process to do that, to come to an agreement? Yes, it's, we, we need to focus a little bit more on commercial zoning processes, or just the overall planning around. Encouraging more commercial development in the county. And, and what's, what's the process to, working with the planning department to, to have a regular discussion and review of what we're trying to do as a county? So I don't know if that's consistent with what you were thinking, Commissioner Gibson, but, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, in terms of what you were hoping for.
Through the chair. That, that was the original intent, but I, I like, I love this idea that Tavon proposed. I think it's fantastic. I'll take it.
I think I made work for myself. Had I known you had a subject matter of economic development, I would've stayed a little more focused.
This is perfect.
So would you take a one topic, bring it up quarterly, so they can have more time to fine tune it? Instead of going all over, trying to scrap bits and pieces? So we have to come in agreement on what topic do we want it here every quarter?
Through the chair, let me comment, since each one of us is under our supervisor. And ultimately, it's the supervisors that are going to do the deeds. That we can talk about something, but unless it's proving to be interesting or important. Now, the supervisors are all dealing with lots of different stuff, and so it would seem to me that they would really look upon the situation of. That if each of them, in, in our discussions with the supervisor we represent, come together. With, that we bring their ideas about a particular subject, and then throw it back at the board of supervisors to take action. Is that, is that what I'm understanding would be the process?
I would, I would like to, just for an editorial here a little bit.
Yeah.
In that these three bullets that I have on the screen right now, zoning code, consistency, you know, housing, economic development. None of this, if we worked on this, is policy formation. Policy's been formed in the general plan. The, the, the board has done their work, if you said, except for funding, and, or holding the hammer to see that we all get it done. You know, these are the, the nuts and bolts, you know, like, number one says, build a car. Or, excuse me, the, the general plan says, build a car. Right now, I say, okay, I, I, I've got my marching orders. Here's the front panel, here's the wheels, here's this, and here's the motor, and, and this is how to do it. And so that's what these lists are, is we need to kinda assemble the pieces to implement those policies and that heavy lifting. That supposedly has already been done, and vetted through the community workshops, and, you know, a general plan that's been decided upon. We will come across a policy determination, like, like right now, I don't know how to value an affordable house for a worker. Over finding the job that that worker can have, that new job. That's, that's some tough stuff. But I also know, and, and with the third layer, is if the zoning code is inconsistent, and I'm scaring away somebody that wants to make a million-dollar investment. That's gonna have thirty new employees, because my code's out of whack, I wanna fix that too. Okay, so we, on the zoning code aspect of it, we just do have some things that are just plain inconsistent with the way state laws have changed. We have some things that we require processes that we, that no longer really serve a purpose, that I'd like to, you know, line out and scratch. Go ahead, sir.
Through the chair. Well, the bullet, all three of those bullet points are extremely important, and we're gonna have to multitask, cause we can't take on one at a time. And that, whether it comes from the planning commission or the board, I think it might be easier to, to start at the planning commission level rather than get the board involved at every time we take a step because all those things need to be taken care of somewhat quickly, updating all of those ordinances, making sure the fees are correct, that kind of thing. So it's, we have to do like Congress, we have to chew gum and walk at the same time.
So just a little mea culpa is, you know, it's with the new staff resources that I'm really finding a little space to breathe and engage some of these things. And just even internet or reading Benito link and, and just learning how establish the chamber and the Economic Development Corporation, things that are already in place and why was I not at the lunch with the 35 people and the nonprofits?
Delicious.
Did they serve chicken? No.
Rubber, a rubber one.
All right, and so, you know, hearing, hearing those concerns, I mean, I might find that, hey, you know, it's not too different from direction that's already given in the general plan, but in some way there's already Economic Development Forum happening. You've already formed an ad hoc committee for some of the housing things that are moving forward. And we've got a lot to tackle in there from mobile homes and labor to tiny houses to ADUs to what's the appropriate fee. I don't know, there's a dedicated agency right now that's really working on the zoning code consistency aspects. If you'd beg my pardon for a moment, I'd like to grab a handout and put it right in front of you and we'll just focus on one thing, but it was the letter from EMC to Margie Varios that had the recommendations in 2015 on if you take on the zoning code, and I'm saying zoning code in a broad sense, that's really county code because there's subdivision ordinances and engineering regulations and, and different things that all, that we're reviewing every time we bring a staff report to you, that they're consistent with these things. And the general plan to meet that new policy might need tweaks in these, in these several... Yeah, when you do ordinance, when you're changing those things, it's, you'd love to be focused on line 25 and just get the words right, but it's an octopus. It's got relations to other parts in the code that you have to correct at the same time so that they're not in conflict. But could I put that handout in front of you and we can?
Sure, anything Margie did is good.
Just through the chair, as a side note, the ad hoc committee, it was a vague proposal when Commissioner Eggers and I were put on that committee. So it covered all housing ordinances and that's something that we're going to continue to work with the board to go through pretty much that entire list of issues and we'll probably add some to it. So it'll be a long-term goal to get our ordinances up to date.
And when was that ad hoc formed?
Three or four months ago.
Here?
Mm-hmm.
Duh, okay.
Would you pass that down, Commissioner?
Sure, just, oh, there's one for each of us? Got it. That's like six documents. That's going to take me a while to read.
So I can, I can help you get a little more laser precision if you turn the page one over to page two and it says zoning consistency that it has, it's about four fifths of a page long on different zoning code sections, little things that would facilitate implementation of the general plan on a zoning code consistency aspect. What it doesn't mention in those bullets are just the things that are plain out of date and inconsistent with state law that we would adjust at the same time.
And through the chair, if I may, and right before the previous RMA director left, we were supposed to get an update on the general plan updates. Is that still in the works by the present RMA director at some point in the near future?
On the general plan updates. This is the most constructive activity towards those ends right now. And so it's, I crafted this response to you, so I'm kind of in the driver's seat a little bit. So I haven't heard from the RMA director, but he thought this was a good exercise to let you know all the activities we're working on programmatically as well as code requirements. All I really know of is the commercial nodes application that's going forward as an implementation of a general plan policy, and that one's being paid for by private parties to turn the gears, not to necessarily guarantee an answer or guarantee what the end product is going to look like that gets in the code, or even if it applies to every one of those nodes. But as far as the general plan implementation, well, I beg your pardon, on the note I gave you on the front sheet, the first recommendation was update the housing element. And that was done. That was done by the county. We have a housing element that spans a period 2014 to 20, what is it, 23? 2023 and eight, eight-ish year period. So that one was done, the housing element. But just like a general plan, it's a housing element called for programs to be created, ordinances to be adjusted so that you meet those goals and policies such as streamlining government. So there's these general plan implementation things that we're talking right here does include the housing element. And that's exactly what the ad hoc committee, what do we, what do we need to do to change, change in our rule systems to make it workable to these aims of providing more housing? And so the element was done, but not necessarily the, all the implementation aspects of that. Give me two more staff members and we'll rock and roll.
At what level? Planners or?
Senior planners. Oh, I'll, I'll take two or three Aerials as well as, we've got some, we've got some great staff. And, and I know Mr. Kelly here also has a great head for policy and thinking through those things as well. So, and in fact, since Michael's been here so long, he might like the something new to do versus the, you know, day-to-day use permit. So that's odd when you bring in a consultant to do the stuff that maybe people have had an eye on and a passion for wanting to fix for a long time and the, the new guy gets it, you know, the new girl. But I actually don't think that a lot of this stuff should be contracted out. I would think, you know, in my recommended budget for the department that was filtered and I don't know, it ended up, I think, as an edit on a floor in a scrap somewhere, I suggested that we increase the planning department staff by two senior planners that were, you know, of that journeyed caliber so that as we needed to write one of these codes, one of these implementation codes, that they would have the skill set to get it done, but that they'd also be in-house and that their level of professionalism and experience would rub off on our existing staff as well as our existing staff says, yeah, but in San Benito County, we've got this kind of history, this kind of law, this kind of, this kind of way that we do things. So as your dear new planner, as you're crafting that policy, we can help you craft it so that it fits best here in San Benito County. So I really wanted that in staff as opposed to just saying, let's give $150,000 to a consultant out there to write us an implementation ordinance, they submit us a report and say, here you go. I wanted it to really be walking in step with us. But literally, I mean, if we, if we had that bandwidth, I mean, just, just the little breathing room I'm getting with, with this, with, you know, the, the two new staff members, one being previously funded but vacant, and that's Ariel, but she comes with that, and then also our staff services specialist, Ms. Stevens. And just, wow, my, my, my need to get done list, I've got, I've got help. Anyway, maybe it's too much to ask for any one of these and that is interesting. I mean, some of my staff members come to me all the time, or even myself, is all three of these can't be my priority, you know? And it's not going to be that we just get one done and get it off the list. So there is a certain amount of all-in that we have to have, but it's, it's drawn out over a longer period. And the more we can perfect our internal procedures or our internal zoning consistency, I think gives us additional bandwidth, almost like new staff members, to work on some of these others. I've been talking a lot, but I'm going to give a metaphor to, I remember when I was a young married man and my wife and I, we had five or six credit cards, everyone came in with a bill each month. Oh, man, how do we do this? How do we, how do we knock this down? And we decided we're gonna, we're gonna pay that one and get it off so that that bill doesn't come next month. And then we paid the second one and just did it, and we were still paying, not the minimum, but we did that. And then what we found was getting those two off our desk gave us additional resources so that when we hit credit card bill number three, we actually had more to put back, and credit card three went down quicker and credit four went down even quicker because we had paid those others. And, you know, now we try to operate with zero balance or whatever. But I mean, it's just, if we can take care of some of these things that are, you know, slowing us down, I think the, the machine will run more smoothly. Turning this mic off.
So bringing back what's, I mean, I think one item every three months because you don't want to overload us.
Through the chair, I mean, the, the housing ordinance is, it's something that's occurring currently. We have a meeting tomorrow and we're going to continue to have meetings until we knock that list of what we need to update to zero because it's long past time that we update our ordinances. As far as the commercial issue, which is not just applications, it's a much more broader spectrum, I think that's something that I would like staff to start looking at just so we can at some point in the future tackle our jobs issue in the county and not leave our future up to what the city does or does not do. I think that would be not in our best interest to leave our economic development to the city alone.
So as I captured your thoughts earlier from you, using decent employers and jobs, rezoning for industrial parks, we need to be thinking 40 to 50 years in the future and also making sure that we're exploring our partnerships with local universities such as CSU MB and others.
Yes.
Is that a capture of your, your thoughts?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
For instance, through, well, through the chair, sorry. For instance, when GAV opens up their new campus in 2021, what happens with the Briggs Building? Maybe CSU MB can start a little pilot there. I mean, there's a lot of opportunities. We just have to sometimes reach out and, and grab something instead of waiting for something to fall in our lap because we can't just keep continuing down this path that we have for the last hundred years. The county has to realize we have to change with the current times.
After all, it's called planning.
Yeah, but, but a lot, a lot of people still say we're an ag community. Well, that's just not reality anymore. Silicon Valley's driving central California and we have to jump on board or get buried.
That's right. How do we transform from being such a reactive, subject to other whims and other market forces to being proactive planning?
Commissioner, so, I mean, Gibson's at economic development's priority.
I think there's multiple priorities.
Yeah, but that, you know, we can't take all of them, one at a time.
To assign to staff, I think that would be, for me, a key priority. The ad hoc committee and the board of supervisors, I think, will handle the ordinance issues.
And perhaps there's, there's a readout back from Jamila on that ad hoc committee back to this planning commission on a regular basis. Again, it's not, no additional work, it's just, how does that report get back to us on a semi-regular basis?
If she has the bandwidth, that would be nice. She's stretched between Hollister and the county as well.
Sure.
So why don't I, why don't I offer, I, I believe Ariel would like to say something and address, and I'll invite her up a moment if it's within your bandwidth. But why don't I offer this is, you, you see what we're working on. We, we realize that we can't trade one of these major things for the other. Really, we need to work on all this. But if we were to be hit with, you know, particular tasks, bring this back next week, bring this back to a special meeting and stuff, I would hope that it's building and it's a part of some of the things that we're working on here versus like, ah, man, I was almost there, over the line with something, but now I've got to do this report for the planning commission. I'm just hoping that we can all live together with that or that you're confident that what we're working on is, you know, to your direction and to your aims. How's that? Would you still like to speak?
So as new staff, you know, coming, sorry.
Thank you, thank you, Chairman.
So as new staff coming into the planning department, I, I have been kind of helping to look into implementation, updating our zoning, and I've been working with Jamila and there is, it's called SB2 and it is a grant for up to 160,000. And so we're actually, you know, working together on getting that application completed and pri, you know, prioritizing, okay, what elements are we going to be applying within it? But what I think, and I think is very important for the commission is, you guys are noticing this need for jobs and commercial. And so I think what we should be responding to you is that as we're going through our ordinances, our general plan and our zoning, that we should come to you with maybe a specific location, that this would be a good zone, a good area to develop. I think that's what you're kind of looking for from my interpretation. You're trying to find, okay, this is a spot that we should create kind of a commercial node and, and in that spot, we're gonna, you know, pre-do the SEQA so it's set in place and we're gonna make sure that we, you know, maybe there's a streamlined permit for this location. So it sounds like that that's where your focus is for our department as far as commercial.
Commercial and industrial.
I think that could help.
We need, we need industrial.
And so maybe we can put it into us to come back with some findings on, on that point.
We have to do it in such a way that we don't raise the price of real estate in the community unfairly.
There is, don't worry about that. It's going to come down.
Because it, because it sounds like you're looking for some more information in it.
I think the price is going to come down on the, on our industrial side of it.
Through the, through the chair, I was at a meeting with the United Way of Monterey County and they're helping their jurisdictions with the SB2 grant applications. We're not part of Monterey County, but you might reach out to them or to our United Way and see if there's some sort of coordination to get the grant application approved.
It should be the United Way.
So I believe Monterey City's SB2 grant has been awarded. I don't know if they received their funds yet, but they did have some good program formation taken theirs and it is kind of one of our keys.
Yeah, so think, let's, let's decode that for a moment. The city of Monterey had an economic development program and plan and staff qualified to seek grants and to know how to write grants and be ready to write grants as the, as they become available. They were on it because that's built in, that's built into their system already and, and they did it well and they received their money. Right?
That's where we're missing out. We're not funding the positions and we're shooting ourselves in the We're not funding the positions and we're shooting ourselves in the foot constantly.
Okay, and, and.
They are funding the positions, but nothing gets done. Some go there.
But we don't have a grant writer other than the gentleman at H, was it H?
Health and Human Services.
Yes, Health and Human Services, yes.
Didn't the county hire someone? No, the supervisor, I consulted, bringing grants.
And see, the irony with such a position is they generally write their own paycheck. It's something that pays, oh, and, you know, that'll cover the cost of our grant writer while we bring this money in, so.
The, the other failed attempt was a lobbyist, which. A grant writer's different.
$150,000 on the tube, I know.
All right, so let me see if I've captured. I've captured Commissioner Gibson's particular concerns about economic development, but I think I also heard broadly is that if there was a better, more reporting on our side to the commission, you know, maybe the department reports or you hear a little bit from Jamila's department as the housing coordinator or you hear our progress with what the ad hoc committee on housing did or how we participated in the economic development forum and we're looking at eyeing a code. So a little more bring in, bring in information back to you that that might satisfy you.
But we don't need that.
We'll work on all three of those priorities.
Yeah, but we're not going to need all that information from every department. I mean, you're going to have a hundred things to just a couple items.
Well, I didn't see a hundred coming myself.
Report about the water, let me report about this, none of that, you know, just the important ones.
Well, how about these three?
That's.
How about, how about the realm of these three right here, okay?
Good idea.
Is that all right?
Yeah, just keep it sequential.
And I like.
I mean, I just, there, you know, you might find in Margie Barrios's letter there that there's something else I should have of four, but I'm, I'm thinking these three were kind of the river that ran through most of your comments and, and the things that would get our ship on course.
Yeah, I think, yeah, keeping those three things. Because I think the main disconnect is connecting the efficiencies, administrative and procedural efficiencies with the big picture goals of the county, right? So even like to your point about having things already kind of streamlined and ready to go, there's some sort of lack of connection there with what current systems and procedures are now. So starting, you know, tackling one, two, and three sequentially, going from there and then streamlining those processes, I think, will enable future kind of projects and proposals to be a lot more, you know, efficient and kind of not slip down the cracks as I think were a lot of the comments that were being made, but rather being more just to the point. It's, you know, eliminating the gray and keeping it as black and white as possible, right? Knowing that there's going to be gray, you know, obviously, but, you know.
And as you've managed to identify areas that'd be good areas for industrial or commercial within the, I guess you gotta do within city limits. Because we need, we're talking about, they need sewer.
Well, at least close enough to their pipe.
Yeah, no, I mean, if an industrial park was to come in, they'll, they'll put in a 50, I mean, 50 miles of sewer line they need to, right? If they're really into it, everybody can go 10, 12 miles.
It's the only community I, I know that will, Hollister, that will extend their utility services without extending their district, without changing their district lines. That's, that's not a practice in other counties.
Well, that's what happened back in the nineties when they had the economic development. They extended a sewer line all the way to where you guys are located.
To, to that office park, yeah.
They, they did a new sewer line with a federal, federal grant.
Yeah, right.
Back in the early nineties, late eighties, early nineties.
So I think I could probably report to you more than quarterly, but since we only meet once a month, it's about every third, about every third meeting or so that we try to bring you an update on, on what we're working on that furthers these three big general plan subject matters.
And I think as part of that report is where do you need help? So it's not just a report out, here's what we're doing, but here's where we need help. Because I think that's where the planning commissioner, working with our respective supervisors, can be, be that help for you, hopefully. You know, that's, I think that's where we, we want to be proactive. We want to, we don't want to be reactive. So if you're falling behind where you would hope to be because of resources or whatever it may be, you know, make sure you bring that up as part of that, that quarterly report so that, that we can, we can be there to support.
I need three new ad hoc committees, ready?
If, if you say you need that, then that's fine. Well, we'll do, we can support you, but that may not be what you need. So I, I think it's, it's helpful for you to have it to just let us know, hey, it's a resource issue. You know, I'm getting bombarded with all these, you know, just the, the day-to-day jobs. I can't focus on the longer-term work.
And as discussed.
And that's fine.
I'd rather have people than cash. I'd rather have folks, you know, composing and writing things and producing a product or, excuse me, putting paint on the canvas that we can give shape and color to.
Through the chair, part of that, I guess, would be two FTEs of senior planners on the list ASAP.
That was just my suggestion.
Well, if, if it's something that's needed to get this county going in the right direction, I think it's a good investment.
All right, so let, let me just go there for a second before we end. Most planning departments and, you know, any, you know, we've got cities that are very large, they have the current planning, which is the day-to-day permit processing. And then you have, it's called advanced planning, which is what are the ordinances we need in place today? What are the ordinances we need in place tomorrow? What was the directive from the board for this vision they wanted to organize? And so there's generally dedicated staff to that purpose in so many planning departments. And, you know, right out of school and things like that, you're, you're taught theory and how to write these things, how to, how to get from a goal, a community goal, a community aspiration to the implementation on the ground to get it done. That's supposed to be the balance in, in a planning department. It's generally, you know, probably two to every four or two to every five current planners generally. And if I had them on staff, then if we had changing priorities, I wouldn't have to amend a contract and I'd have that person in-house. So I guess my pitch is much too late for this, for this budget year. But yeah, it's, it's what planning departments do. And we've just now, just here, got a little taste of it. And, and I think you're feeling the power behind it, aren't you, right? If we can fix the rule sets? So yes, wouldn't hurt at all.
Well, is this kind of big enough to have two plan directors?
Sounds like fighting words.
No, no, I'm just saying, you know.
Not directors.
Not, or.
Planers.
No, it's.
Yeah, it's, I mean.
Already, you know, planning, we're, we're assisting, you know, public works, building department, integrated waste, da-da-da-da, the, the, the advanced planning, I mean, that's the work we're talking about here as we're doing advanced planning work versus the paying customer in the door that says, process my application. All right, so it's, that's generally one of the drawbacks is there's, it's more overhead or how you say, but you gotta look in that long range, not 40 or 50 years, but where's my cost recovery? Well, it's in an improved economy.
Yeah.
Improved business climate versus, you know, we, that was $75,000 in salary and they only brought in $10,000 worth of such and such. Well, wait a minute.
It's not a business. I agree, I agree. We, we have to invest as a, as a county in order to have a future. And it's ludicrous that we don't have enough planning people that, that I watch you struggle with these things. And you go up to, go out to planning and you've got this skeleton crew trying to carry out the business of the county.
Well, yeah, like even today, I mean, just with certain aspects, we find we have a single absence and it just, how do we do lunch schedule? How's, who's going to answer the phone? And how do we, we, we cover that? And it's, it's brutal sometimes. And sometimes the flu goes around, right? You get more than, more than that. I want to thank you for the discussion item. And I don't know if you want to sum it up in a motion or direction, but I think, oh, you're giving me the card again. All right, so it's your meeting, Chairman.
Three little dots here.
Your Chairman, your meeting.
So we got the discussion items we're going, we're just going to bring back in the next three months, so.
You know, I, I think, I think we've had so much on the table today that we'll digest. I'm sure I'll speak with Michael and Ariel tomorrow. Hey, what happened last night, what do we think? And we'll probably have a little update the next meeting, just what, what our takeaways were. And you'll have some thoughts for us as well.
Thank you, Tavern. Thank you. Michael.
And, and welcome Ariel to planning.
Welcome. Yes. You don't know what you got into, but it's okay.
It's all good.
That's Tavern.
Yeah, I had to ask Ariel, I says, if, if, I hope you don't think we were disingenuous that everything was in order and right and you just jumped in, you know, because we're, we're finding so many things to fix. But what we're doing is we're trying to not go back to old ways. We're going to find the new science, the new practice and keep improving.
What, what better job to get into than one that you can be creative and bring your talents to?
And make a difference, yeah.
Rather than be a cog in a wheel, right?
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.